We'll call the Carlisle Village Council meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bignell. Mr. Jewitt.
Here.
Mr. McElDowney.
Here.
Mr. McIntosh. Ms. Tankersley.
Here.
Mr. Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Winkler.
Here.
I had a couple of messages this afternoon. Mr. McIntosh had an emergency procedure done this afternoon and was unable to attend. And I just recently got word that Mr. Bignell has had an emergency at home just prior to coming to the meeting tonight, and he will not be able to make it tonight either. So may I have a motion to excuse both of those gentlemen this evening?
So moved.
Ms. Tankersley.
Take your pick.
Roll call.
Ms. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt.
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney.
Yes.
Mr. Humphries.
Yes.
Mayor Winkler.
Yes. Mr. Jewitt, or Mr., I was looking at you. Mr. Bignell and Mr. McIntosh has been excused. Do we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes by the clerk?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tankersley. Roll call.
Ms. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Humphries.
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney.
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt.
Yes.
Mayor Winkler.
Yes. Before you are the minutes of our regular meeting of February 27th. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, we have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Tankersley.
Abstain.
Mr. Jewitt.
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney.
Yes.
Mr. Humphries.
Yes.
Mayor Winkler.
Yes. Minutes of February 27th have been adopted. Next is our public forum, and up first on our list is our Warren County Sheriff Larry Sims is here to see us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity. Do I need to stand?
Just so the microphone can pick you up for them.
What's that?
So the microphone can pick you up.
Oh, okay, for you're recorded, because I was just, I feel rude standing with my back to the men and women back there, so I'll just try to talk loud enough. So certainly I appreciate the opportunity to come to visit and share a few things with council. Most of you probably know that I try to get around every year in the first quarter to just kind of touch base and let you know what the county's been like from our perspective the year before, and see if there's any questions or concerns that you have for us or our office. I handed out the year-end report for last year, so you see the typical things, the services that we provide throughout the county and all of our respective divisions. When you're talking about calls for service that we handle, and last year was about 3,000 calls overall, more than in 2016. Nothing real specific that jumps out, as we all have seen with our drug situation, where we've seen increases in overdoses, we've seen increases in the thefts and property crimes that occur with some of these people that are trying to obtain things of value to be able to support their habits. Identity theft continues to be an issue for us in today's technology and how we use those types of things to conduct our daily business. A few things I do want to mention in the report, and I'm not going to go through it page by page, but we did have three homicides in Warren County last year. I'm not sure that's ever happened. Most of you probably grew up here, there's probably years that never had a homicide. All three of these cases were drug-related, and of course, we had one here, the trial just ended here right near the village a year or so ago, or during the last year, and that trial ended with conviction. We had a overdose death at one of the hotels in Deerfield Township, which is one of the hotels that we've had problems with, you know, drugs, prostitution. This person obtained the fentanyl, heroin, overdose died. We were able to track it back to the person that sold him the drugs, and he's now incarcerated and waiting murder charges for that. And then the young man and woman in South Lebanon who beat the, I guess it'd be the aunt to death, and tried to beat her husband to death as well, over about $150 in money that they'd won because they were in need of drugs. So, and that trial's still pending. So some pretty crazy things that do not usually happen in our county. We certainly all know that there's crime that does happen here, but typically not to that degree. We had a canine retire. One of our dogs retired at the end of last year after eight years of service, which is pretty common for dogs in that capacity. We've already obtained his replacement, which is now working with Deputy Hammond's in training. It'll be a few weeks yet before the dog comes out in full service. They've been a tremendous use for us in a variety of capacities, you know, whether it's sniffing drugs or finding people. I know over the years, they've found some elderly people with Alzheimer's that have been disoriented and lost, and we're tracking down bad people, so they're a great resource. We had to add one also to our jail. Imagine putting a cane on our jail. We fight every day for people sneaking the drugs into our jail. I'll let you use your imagination, the hiding places they use. It's not something that we normally can check on a regular basis. So the dog is what we use to be able to hopefully find them once they're back into the housing units. We are in the process of trying to price out and obtain the scanners that you're seeing nowadays, the body scanners, and hopefully just help fight that even more. It's more of a problem when somebody's knowingly coming in and out of our facility. Work release is a problem, because they just know when and where, and oftentimes people leave things at different locations. It's just kind of an ongoing battle. And then that kind of brings me to the jail situation, just as an update. I don't know if anybody's seen any of the media releases today. If you haven't heard this, we've been having this overcrowded jail situation for probably the last three and a half years, where we're releasing people on the lower offending side of things in order to make room for somebody with a more serious offense. And we finally got the contract signed today. The commissioners approved the resolution for the jail architect that we will start meeting next Tuesday, the 20th. We're still ways off, but this was the big step for us, because the county finally approved us with this jail building project. The timeline loosely is still about two and a half years out by the time you can get in it. So you'll see some updates periodically in the media about how that jail building, planning processes is going. The questions I get asked a lot is, where's it going to be? And the hope that it will be in the same complex where we're at and near the same facility. A lot of that's going to depend upon the size. We currently have a capacity of 280 inmates. This jail is going to be closer to 500. 468, I think, is what the original estimate was. And so, as long as there's enough land space, the county does have at least another option that they would consider. If it doesn't, we would rather remain hopeful that it'll be right there. And so we'll see. Time will tell. Other than the typical things you see in here, I see Gary Estes here in the back of the room, and I'm glad I saw him, because, you know, over the last, over a year, the county's been in this countywide project of, you know, new computer-aid dispatch, records management, jail, so that all the law enforcement partners and fire EMS can share access to this stuff on a regular basis. And it's been, just been a crazy, large project. And Gary's one of those key representatives that keep that thing going in the right direction. Vendors are fun to deal with, as most of you probably may know from experience, but he's one of those guys that keeps this thing going forward. Not without some aggravation, though, right?
That's correct.
But it's a good, it's an example, though, of our county's representatives working well together, and I've said this many times to probably all of you. This county is unique from the law enforcement relationship, too. It's outstanding. And I say that from my own experience. I'm not from here originally, and I get around because of the position that I hold now. And then a lot of times, there's, you know, budding heads, there's egos, you know. When you're the chief of the sheriff, that means you're way more important than anybody else, so some people think. But at the end of the day, that's not the reality. In this county, that doesn't work that way. It is very, very good about working together and sharing resources and training together. And that's, Carlisle's the same way. You know, we do these countywide trainings very effectively with one another, especially those things that we're seeing in this day and age with active shooter stuff. That training is going on a regular basis, and it wouldn't be as good without that collective relationship. So we appreciate that. So if anybody has any questions or anything that I can answer, I would certainly be glad to answer them.
I was going to ask where the new jail was going to be located, but you had kind of answered that, so.
Yeah.
It'll continue to be on Justice Drive, hopefully?
Yeah, we hope it will be, and we'll know more about the next month or two, once the experts start looking at all those things.
Yeah. Well, I seen in your report where you responded to like 340 calls, the sheriff's office did in Carlisle this year, so, you know, being that we have a small police force, we certainly appreciate all the help that we can get from the county when it's needed.
Yeah.
I know we were able to join the Drug Task Force, which was a big plus, I think, for our community, and I don't know if our citizens are aware, but it basically cost us $1 for every citizen in town to be a member of the Drug Task Force, to be able to have them to come over here and assist us with the issues that we're having related to drug issues.
Well, and I appreciate you mentioning that. If Steve Aerosmith, who's our Drug Task Force commander, if he hasn't been here to visit you yet this year, he will be. He's doing the same thing I am, trying to get around, just visit and share, and kind of give a snapshot of where we are right now. I will say, and I apologize, I failed to mention, that our deputies started carrying Narcan a year ago this past month, and you'll see some information in there, that in 2017, our deputies administered 70 dosages of Narcan. 54 of those individuals were brought back as a result of that. You know, there's a lot of pluses to that, certainly. Some of the negatives are, is unfortunately, there's a lot of repeat customers that can be in play, as we see, as they're fighting the drug addiction phase, and they don't always survive that second or third, you know, go-around type of thing. But, you know, we've had three law enforcement officers, goes back a little ways, but in about six-month span, we had three officers in our county go down as a result of either touching or inhaling or consuming these narcotics as they go to crime scenes or overdoses, and has landed them at least to be treated in the hospital. I know we had anything fatal, but just being around that stuff and handling it is enough to impact you negatively, so. Appreciate it. Nobody else has any questions or comments? I'll get out of your hair. It's good to see a good crowd here. This is fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, and don't be a stranger.
All right. We'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum is still open. If anyone else would like to address council, please come to the podium, and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Wiggins, and I live at 396 West Lomar Avenue, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm here representing our neighborhood group of citizens on Central, Lomar, Rose, and Hillcrest in response to the conditional use application by Casey's General Store for the corner of Central and Lomar. When we held our first organizational neighborhood meeting to share concerns about the impacts that a convenience store and fuel mart would have on our families, it became clear there was quite a bit of misinformation and confusion about zoning and conditional use, not only in our group, but in the general public as well. We took the time to read the code and the conditions during our meeting, and it was very helpful in clarifying the facts of a conditional use. The code states that conditional uses actually are evaluated at a higher level than permitted uses, because they may cause additional risk to the village, its neighborhoods, and citizens. In fact, the code in Chapter 1272.03 requires that the Planning Commission find that any conditional use fulfills 13 specific requirements. No conditional use can go forward without all 13 being fulfilled. As our group has spoken to friends and neighbors and canvassed other Carlisle neighborhoods, we have heard from so many that they were not aware of the project plans, let alone the 13 conditions that must be satisfied for the project to be approved. To that end, we have created a Facebook group called Concerned Citizens of Carlisle that is thoughtfully monitored by Andy Dollar, one of our members. We encourage you to join our page and read the documentation that we have provided. In addition, our group has been working together for weeks to provide the Planning Commission with documentation of how the proposed conditional use does not meet at least six of the 13 requirements. Our council advised us to request to be placed on the agenda for the April commission meeting, and to show Planning Commission members through our neighborhood and discuss the potential impacts of the proposed gas station. As of tonight, we have not been able to make either happen, and wonder how we are to be adequately included in this process. How do we respond to the application when we are limited to five contentious minutes per person in public comments? How do we, as citizens, gain similar access to the commission members as the corporation had? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, the Planning Commission is its own planning, its own body, and if I was you, I would approach the chairman and the committee members and ask them to be on the agenda, and that you would like to be heard and take the time. Sometimes the five-minute rule comes into play when you have a lot of people who would like to speak, and you try to give everyone the opportunity to voice their opinion, but if you have maybe a designated spokesperson, maybe a little more time can be allowed.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.
You're welcome. Public forum is still open. If anyone else would like to speak? State your name and record, or address for the record, please.
I'm Tom Volpe, 315 Ethel Robbs Circle. This, sorry, reading glasses. The topic is profit and loss statements, or revenue flows for projects. When, I've been, I'm recently on the Planning Commission, and I brought up, what's the P&L for associates building homes on Sunset? And I was told, well, the Planning Commission doesn't talk about revenues, doesn't talk about costs. They're going forward. I think it's a good project, and I'm happy they're going forward, but I don't know if the Planning Commission doesn't look at revenue flows. Is it good for the city? Who does? And in the case of Casey's, that Mr. Wiggins just talked about, Casey's, I've been to Casey's, well, you and I spoke, the mayor and I spoke today by accident. I pushed the wrong button and ended up talking to the mayor. I've been in Casey's, as we've traveled back to family in Iowa and Minnesota, and they've got nice restaurants, nice setups. Who's going to do the profit and loss, or the revenue flows, on something like Casey's? Or any other new business coming to town? As an example, with Casey's, I don't know what the Planning Commission's going to decide, but if it was a business, if I was still back at NCR, we'd look at revenue flows, and we'd look at whether the things were a certainty, or if there's some give and take. As an example, if Casey's goes in, it will have an impact on maybe the donut shop, maybe the two gas stations. I don't know. But we'd do a top-line revenue flow and say, here, here's the best case. And then at NCR, we did step downs. It was our thing. I don't know who does that in the city. I can't find out. So does any entity in the city look at the revenue flows for a new project, or like pro forma P&L? Thank you.
Thank you. To try to answer your question, you know, economic development, you know, they usually approach us, and of course, they usually, one of the questions we usually ask is, how many employees are you bringing? And there's several questions. I know Mrs. Duffy and her staff is more in tune with that than council is. And, you know, they have formulas that they work on, and they try to figure out those, most of these people are asking for abatements when this happens, and that's the reason for some of that questioning and so forth, and to find out about what the city, how they would fare, and a lot of things there. But in this particular case here, I drove over to Casey's last night. I just wanted to see what it was, and so on and so forth. They just opened a new facility in New Lebanon. And I drove over there last night, and they had six gas pumps, two more than what the current Ameristop has. Of course, you can fuel on both sides of the pump, so that equated to 12 fueling stations. Went inside, they had a very nice kitchen area. They told me that they would employ about 12 people that work strictly in the kitchen area, and about six to eight people working the cash registers and stocking shelving areas. They made pizzas. They make their own bread and do sub sandwiches, very similar to Subway. They had hamburgers, they had chicken wings, they had a bakery, they do donuts, they did apple fridges, turnovers, cookies, you know, and they make all this stuff fresh every day. And they had a small seating area. I think they had two tables with about eight chairs. And other than that, it was a small convenience store, basically like what we have here. So they try to be a restaurant to some degree, but they don't have a lot of seating. So it's a very nice facility. Of course, it's brand-new. It should be. But I just wanted to go look at it and see what it was. I've heard all this hype about it. I know it's going to be on a major corner right here in town, is where they're proposing to put it. That's up to Planning Commission to sort that out and to make that decision. But I just wanted my, for myself, to go see what it was, and so on and so forth.
Well, I'm glad you did. That seems like a smart thing to do, based on the, just the numbers you had. If it's 15 to 18 employees, as an example, some are going to be full-time, most are going to be part-time. That's one set of data. And Raj is here, and he's got employees from the Ameristop, and so forth, and whatever. So if, in all best cases, if everybody's employed, and we get taxes from it and all that stuff, what is it? What are the costs to the city? I think some body, some entity in the city should look at that, whether it's economic development or Planning Commission. That's up to you guys. Okay? Final thought. I've said this personally, and I've done it in email, but Mrs. Duffy's doing a great job. With rookies like me that come into this environment, it's complicated, and it doesn't work like a business does, and it's different with code. And she's done a wonderful job of detailing stuff, giving us reading material maybe more than I wanted, but it's pretty darn easy to follow, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Public?
I just had more of a question and a comment. With two council members being gone tonight, with the reading for Sunset Estates, how do?
You come to the podium just to make you official. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll just make it official.
Okay. So my question is, is it Rob, or Associate Construction, 31 Eagle Ford?
Thanks.
Is it a simple majority tonight, then? Out of the four, only four people are going to be able to vote?
Yes, my understanding is, it is a simple majority. I can try to get hold of our law director if you want to take a recess, if you want me to confirm that. My understanding is that the rule of emergency language will still require five, and the rule of regular passage will be a simple majority of those present.
You know, I will have to abstain.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we only have four that can vote here, so three would pass. Correct.
Mine would be, it would be of those present, not those able to vote. So if there's five members, you would need three to pass. But if we want to confirm with the law director, I can, we would need a recess to, for me to go contact him.
Is counsel okay with that?
I like verification, just to be sure.
Yeah, just for, just.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take a short recess, and.
Do we need a motion?
I would say a motion to go into recess, just to be safe.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
Yeah.
If that.
For clarification of a law, clarification from the law director.
Do we want to just, sorry, to conclude with the public forum, just in case there might be anything else, perchance, that we would need clarification of?
Yeah, we.
Or do you want to?
So let's finish the public forum, then we'll recess.
Okay. Just in case, so.
It makes perfect sense.
One more minute. One more minute. Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address council? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Claudia Tuss. Diane Drive here at Carlisle. I know tonight is the vote for me, as far as things that I've been involved in. Just want to kind of encapsulate, encapsulate the four points, five points that I have. Number one, a few years back, Carlisle made a comprehensive plan that dealt with many things of where Carlisle is, where it's going to be, and how to get there. I think the vote tonight is a direct, that comprehensive plan should be considered. A lot of time was spent in it. The comprehensive plan does involve improvements to Sunset, and I think that needs to be considered in the vote. Number two, the gentleman earlier talked about waivers, what we have to, what is permitted to give waivers. At our last meeting, we discussed the two that stuck with me. One is there are boulders somewhere physically that the builder can't move, can't build around. We have to waive that. Or number two, is it the builder's fault, something that he has no control over. Neither one of these cases apply in this situation. Number three, if you allow one builder to come in and bypass ordinances that are put in place, you have to allow all of them. It's that simple. Number four, what is the zoning for this area? My understanding, it is a business-type of a zoning?
If I can address that. The property in question is currently zoned B3, which is Central Business District. Single-family homes are permitted use within a B3.
Okay. And then again, the economics of what the other gentleman was talking about, what these houses will bring to the village versus what it's going to cost the village someday, being taxpayers, to do the proper road improvement in that area. Dollars and cents, it doesn't make any sense to allow a developer to come in and build houses and not be responsible for the area in which he builds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like them to respond.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just kind of want to go through this packet with you, so you can kind of see my side a little bit. So with, we're talking about five houses, and five lots is all that we're talking about on the residential side. We've built and developed lots in Carlisle for over 20 years. We've done over 400 homes, and this is the only time I've ever busted not to have curbing gutters or sidewalks installed, so it's not like it's something I'm going to be asking for every development that we do. She said time and time again that it's going to cost the taxpayers money in the future, because she's, I guess, believes that at some point in the future, curbing gutter would have to be installed. These are only five lots, and as I'm going to show you in the pictures following this, on acreage lots, you normally do not have curbing gutter or sidewalk. All the surrounding areas do not have curbing gutter or sidewalk, so it's not something that would ever have to be done in the future. I have pictures in there from a development down Jamaica Road, down with the Wind Dancer. It's done about 30 years ago. There's no sidewalk, there's no curbing gutter. That's about a quarter mile from the city limits. It's been that way for 30 years, and nobody's had to come back and put a curbing gutter in. So just because you're building new houses doesn't mean you have to have a curbing gutter on lots this size. So I think Carlisle would benefit from having five nice homes down there. They're going to be homes similar to what we're doing, equal ribs, they're going to be full brick, they're going to be larger homes, potentially homes that would be able to offer detached garages, or more space for the individuals. We have a lot of people that come to us that want a little larger lot than what we offer in our subdivision, so that's the reason why we're doing it. So I think Carlisle would benefit from having those nice homes down there on that street, as opposed to the ground that's been there for sale for 10 years that they've been trying to get rid of, so. And the other thing is the cost to the city. She keeps talking about the cost to the city. The road's already there. It's not going to be any additional cost for the city as far as snow plowing, police, fire. It's five homes, is all it is. It's five homes. So it's not 100 homes, it's five homes, so. So it's not 100 homes, it's five homes, so. But just kind of going through my packet a little bit, I've got some pictures of Sunset Drive there. There's two homes that have already been built down there that were not required to have curbing gutter or sidewalk or water service. So as you can see from those pictures, those were already approved, and there's 800 feet of frontage down there, which is already more than what I'm going to be developing. So, all I'm trying to do is match what is already there, the existing structure that is there. To me, it doesn't make any sense to run curbing gutter and sidewalk on half of that street when the other part, portion of that street's not going to be required to do that. It wasn't originally required to do that. So, doesn't make any sense to run, you know, run curbing gutter and then stop it at the point where there's no connection. So you can see that in the four pictures I have there. As a frontage of the Boyer Residence, you can see the two brick posts he has built there. If the curbing gutter were put in and the road was extended out, it would be a weird transition point to try to transition around those posts. So, and nobody's going to pay to put curbing gutter in front of the Boyer's house. So that's not going to happen at this point. It can't be done. So, moving along. My other point is, there was another development, and it's the closest one to what I'm proposing. It was put in by Jim Gross. It's down on South Union Road. Same setup, it was six lots, all acreage lots. No curbing gutter, sidewalk, water service or sewer required on this plus. On this, I don't know if you call it plat, they're out parcels, that's what I consider what I'm submitting. You know, subdivision to me is more of, more than five lots, but in this particular subdivision, there was nothing required down there. Originally, I came in with the idea to run the sewer, have wells, and not do the curbing gutter and sidewalk. Since then, you know, I've negotiated with the Planning Commission, offered to put another 50,000 inches of mix to do water all the way through there for five lots. So, in my opinion, that's a fair deal. You're getting the water, you're getting the sewer. But you know, you can't do anything, everything on just five lots, so. If you can take a look at that, I snapped some pictures down there to show you what's already been approved on a very similar subdivision, so. And then, last, I have pictures of Wind Dancer there. Like I said, that's really close community. It's in German Township. Acreage lots, no curb gutter, sidewalk, water or sewer down there. That's the idea, that's the concept, bigger houses, you have detached garages down there. And that's what I'm trying to do on Sunset, so. Kind of take a look at those. Those have been in for 30 years and nobody from the Township's had to come in and put in curbing gutter or sidewalk. It's, you know, just because you're building houses doesn't mean you have to have all those things, so. Carlisle's really the only place that we build that requires sidewalks in every subdivision. I build in Beckbridge and Springburl, no sidewalks over there, Crown Point, no sidewalks over there. So it's just, it's kind of unique to this area and that's fine. But I'm just kind of making you understand that when we build in other areas, it's not always required, so. But that's, that's what I have. Question?
Just out of my mind, I've lived here for 47 years now. The lots over there on Union Road that you have the pictures of?
Yes.
Is that actually in the city? I thought the city started right at the railroad track.
It's in the city.
Those are in the city? They are the last properties on, in the city, on that side.
I've probably driven past that side.
And when were those approved? Then within the last seven or eight years, I believe, maybe? Do you know?
It's at least a couple of years ago. I'd have to do some digging to figure out more about that project.
I didn't know that there was a development, or didn't recall that there was a development there. I knew that there was two 80-acre farms that Mr. Gross bought. And he started the development off of Jamaica Road. But I didn't, I wasn't aware or don't recall anything happening on Union Road.
Right. And it doesn't make sense to have curbing gutter down there either. I completely agree with that. It's, they're acreage lots, it's never done, so.
If that development is ever built through and there's curbing gutter started on Jamaica Road, I think it would make sense at the completion of the project. But I didn't know they were starting on both sides, is my comment.
Are you talking about Union, you said Jamaica?
Yes.
Well, on Jamaica Road, Phase One is already in, and there are curbs and so forth up there.
Indian tracks.
Indian tracks, up here on Jamaica Road.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's totally different. That's, those are smaller lots. I'm talking about on Union Road where he has acreage lots.
Yeah, well, I, I thought that development was supposed to go all the way through.
Okay.
But it was going to start on Jamaica and end on Union.
Okay.
That was my vision that I was always told.
Okay.
So.
Irregardless, they were plowed and approved that way, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Public forum is still open, if anyone else would like to address council? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum and we'll take a short recess for Mrs. Duffy to contact the law director for some guidance, so.
I'll make a motion to take a 10-minute recess for clarification on a law item question.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
We're back in regular form. So we will close public forum and we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Humphries, would you like to start this evening?
Well, thank you. First off, I would like to bring up the topic of Carlisle Park Apartments. The town, the townhouse closest to the store. It's been kind of like boxed up and sitting there for a while.
Is this, what is?
Bill DuBois.
Okay, thank you. I know that's not its current name, but, okay.
Previously, back in the day before when I was on council, that was something that, I believe, a group had bought it. They laid out an agenda of points of interest when they were hit things. They were, they're very good at doing the windows and the doors and the privacy fences and things of that nature. And it just kind of seems that building is sitting stagnant, and I've had a few people ask about that. So it's possible to reach out to them to see if they have a plan or an agenda with that.
And you're referring to the two vacant buildings behind, or to the apartment complex?
The large townhouse closest to the store.
Okay.
Also like to mention the Marflex fire that, I believe that was Monday. We had several communities come in and support our community and our business. And I don't have, I'm aware of who they are, but I hate to miss somebody. So I would just like to openly thank all of the crews that came out to support that fire. Would like to acknowledge DJ Chambers. He is a student in Carlisle. And as a senior, he ended up being the number one in the state of Ohio as a 60-yard dash, I believe it was a 60-yard dash, and ended up getting to go to New York and became the 24th in the nation. The tough thing about, you know, we have a lot of boys and young ladies that excel in sports within our community, so you hate to kind of single someone out. But that is something that, you know, to be number one in the state of Ohio and get to go to New York, that was, I find that pretty impressive. And that's what I have for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Tankersley?
Yeah, I just want to thank council for excusing me last meeting, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McElDowney?
Thank you to Sheriff Sims, I know he's departed, and his Department of Men and Women for their service to Warren County. And then also, as I've said recently, thank you to the citizens coming to our meetings and being engaged during our community forum, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jewitt?
One thing I wanted to touch on, Tim already touched about, was the Marflex. I also wanted to thank the area communities that responded to that fire. We are a small volunteer fire squad. And when there's not anyone there, it is nice to be able to count on them. And I've still got this cold that I've had for two months, so it's not a cold, it's just I lose my voice, makes my wife happy. But I did want to thank them, and I'm going to cut it off right now.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the council report, we'll move on to mayor's report. Not to be redundant, but I, I would also like to thank all the emergency personnel that showed up for the Marflex situation. It's my understanding at one point there was like 14 fire apparatuses or emergency apparatuses there taking care of all that situation. And of course, every community, I think, depends on mutual aid for, at some point in time. Most of the time, actually, not, not very many communities are equipped to handle everything. They, they always depend on their neighbors for help, so. We certainly do appreciate everyone that showed up. Also, I was going to congratulate DJ. I saw on Facebook where he was in New York and had done very well there. And he, he was quite an athlete to watch this year in football. The, the opposing teams didn't take long to figure out you didn't kick the ball to them, so. He was, he was quite an athlete, so congratulations to DJ as well. And that's all I have this evening. So we close mayor's report and move on to manager's report.
I actually have nothing prepared this evening, so I won't yammer on about nothing.
Okay, thank you. Next is our committee report. We had a short, brief meeting on economic development. And Mr. McElDowney is going to give a brief overview of that.
Thank you, mayor. The Economic Development Committee is made up of myself, Mayor Winkler, and Mr. McIntosh. Mr. McIntosh, as we spoke of earlier, is unable to be here tonight. So the mayor and I spoke with Ms. Duffy about our small business group, our small business coalition that we discussed at the retreat. She prepared for us quite an extensive list that she has gathered from the auditor's office and our zoning map, that she is cross-referencing to determine which businesses we do have in town and who to reach out to as we move forward, trying to form this group. We will meet again prior to our council meeting on March 27th. That will allow Ms. Duffy more time to continue to sort through the list. At that meeting, we will hopefully look forward into the calendar and try to pinpoint a date where the village staff and hopefully maybe the mayor or a member or two of the Economic Development Committee can have a discussion with our local businesses to, in ways that the community can support them, ways that the city, the staff, council can support them as a whole. And go from there to continue to build stronger relationships with our existing businesses. And that is all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no old business or new business, but under first readings of ordinance and resolutions, Resolution 418?
Ms. Mayor, just, just before we get to the readings, there was a legal question asked earlier about the number of votes required tonight for passage of ordinances and resolutions. I did speak with our law director, and he has indicated that for those that require emergency adoption, the rule of five as set by the charter would still be in effect. For anything that does not require, sorry, here, emergency passage, the magical number would be three.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, not to interrupt.
Thank you. Resolution 418, initiating amendment of Section 1274.17, parking and usage of recreational vehicles. And that is on for an emergency. So may I have a motion to suspend the rule requiring three readings and have one reading by title only and declaring an emergency?
Would you like me to explain the emergency?
Yes, please.
Yes, I was going to ask if you would do that for people.
Okay, um, sorry, moving around paperwork. On tonight is a resolution to initiate the official process to amend our zoning code, specifically Section 1274.17, that is parking and usage of recreations. Council has been involved in, I've lost count, but several work sessions about this topic. And by our code, there are three ways that the zoning code could be officially amended. One would be that the Planning Commission would recommend and initiate change at their level. One would be that a property owner could initiate a request for change of the zoning code. And another one is that council can initiate the change for the zoning code. The process would go to, always start at the Planning Commission where a required public hearing would be held about the textual change. And then Planning Commission members would vote on recommending what that textual change would be back to council. At that time, council would have a second public hearing with notification to the public through the newspaper. And then, any changes to the code would be by ordinance, which would go through the normal three readings and 30 days' process, unless council would waive that requirement. So knowing that we do have two public hearings, plus the formal adoption of the ordinance ahead, and knowing that this issue is a change for the entire community about how to legally park and store their recreational vehicles, and knowing that we're coming close to, I think, prime RV season, being spring, summer and fall, it's on for an emergency to begin the process as quickly as possible for the benefit of the entire community.
Okay. We have a motion for the emergency?
So moved.
Ms. Tankersley, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
A resolution initiating the amendment of Section 1274.17, parking and usage of recreational and passenger vehicles in residential districts of the zoning code and requesting an emergency. So as I stated, this will not, by itself, the passage of this will change right now the, the language in it. There are proposed language that was vetted out during the work session process with council and the members of the public who attended. And that proposed language is, would go back to Planning Commission for them to look over, possibly make recommendations and amendments to that, for it then to come back to council. And at that time, if you believe that there need to be additional changes or tweaks, you would be able to at that time through that process.
Okay.
Quick question, I believe you already fixed it. But the, we discussed the commercial vehicles at the last work session. That has been removed, is that correct, Ms. Duffy?
Yes, yes. So what you have before you, and it is Exhibit A that will be attached to the resolution, shows the existing language to be completely replaced with the proposed language, which does not currently include any reference to commercial vehicles. It was my understanding that council had decided to place that possibly into the code later and possibly into a different section, but not to include it yet.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
Resolution 418 has been adopted. Resolution 518, authorize manager to sign agreement with Franklin Township, clarifying tax withholding. And that is on for a first reading?
A resolution authorizing the village manager to sign an agreement by and between the municipality of Carlisle and Franklin Township, clarifying income tax withholding for Franklin Township employees. This is an agreement that the Franklin Township had approached us with. Their fiscal officer was reviewing some of their internal documents. And it appears that previous Franklin Township administrators believed that there was an agreement between Carlisle and Franklin Township regarding how they would withhold local taxes. The Franklin Township is a little unique in the fact that it is physically within the village limits, but the majority of their operations are outside of the village limits. Their fire stations, the cemetery. It is not uncommon for public entities that have similar arranged geographical situations to develop an arrangement with the proper withholding of the income tax to reflect that taxes being withheld on the work performed within the village limits. An alternative method would be to withhold the full amount since their primary administrative location is in within the village limits, and then issue refunds to individual employees that they provide the proof showing how. that they provide the proof showing how much of their time was spent outside the city limits. And talking with the township administrators and ourselves, we thought rather than have the approach of take all and give back, let's just look at their jobs and come up with an agreement that would properly withhold, on average, an amount that reflects their duties. And talking with the Franklin Township administration and the fiscal officer, the agreement before you is that all administrative duties, the township trustees and the administrator and her secretary and those, and the fiscal officer, would have all of their gross earnings subject to local taxes. The fire stations are completely without, outside of the village limits, so they would not have any taxes withheld. The cemetery operators are completely housed and outside the village limits. It would be the road crew for the township recognizing that they do have equipment stored here, and they do come here to get their salt, but they are maintaining the roads and the right of ways outside of the village limits. The agreement would propose that, on average, if you look at their entire year, one-third of their gross salaries would be based on the amount earned within the village limits, and the service director or their equivalent position would have half of his gross earnings subject to local taxes, recognizing that in addition to being a working supervisor, he also would have, he or she would have administrative roles that would require him to be in the office or her longer. So this agreement would, it has been reviewed by our law director, and he thought it was a very good relationship standard between our two entities, recognizing what we do rather than take all and give back. They are in the process of having their legal counsel review it as well. The administrator and the fiscal officer are fine with the language. They are very happy to have something in place from a go-forward basis. But it's on for a first reading. That way, they do have time to have their legal counsel provide feedback that, I'm not even sure if they have it male or female, that he or she is agreeable as well.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council?
Will it require acceptance on their, by their trustees?
As my understanding, no.
Okay.
But I can clarify that with, by the next reading to make sure.
Sure.
Because the agreement is, internally, they may have a process where they won't allow her to sign without, similar to like I wouldn't be able to sign without council's approval. They may have an internal process as well. But the agreement would be signed by myself on behalf of the village and Mrs. Stiber's on behalf of the township.
Okay. No further discussion? That will be on for a second reading on March 27. Resolution 618, appointing a designee to attend public records training on behalf of council, and that is on for a first reading.
A resolution appointing the designee of the Village of Carlisle, Ohio, under Ohio Revised Code Sections 149.43 and 109.43, and ratifying prior action of council. This tonight is, historically, the clerk of council has been appointed by members of council to be the public records designee. Ohio Revised Code requires that all public officials receive three hours of public records training at some point during their term, or they can choose a designee who would attend the public training on their behalf to satisfy that requirement. Historically, it looks, it appears that council has opted to have the clerk of council play that role. One way or the other, it is not required. If you do not choose a designee, then the obligation to attend the three-hour public training would default back to each individual council member to go through it and just document that they went. So I do, I did place it on for a first reading on emergency. Looking at this, historically, we have adopted it by emergency. I am indicating that a first reading, I think, would be fine, knowing that the requirement is over the course of each of your terms. So some of you have two years to complete based on your term, some of you have four years to complete the required training. So we do have time to allow to go through the three-reading thirty-day cycle.
It's nice to have a designee, but I, I agree that we probably all need to attend a three-hour training, because a lot of folks use their personal devices, sending emails and texts, and that is subject to public record. So I, I think everyone probably should attend at some point, just to know what you should and should not do, because your personal devices could be taken and used if necessary to substantiate a case, so. Any further discussion?
I have a question, sorry for all of them today.
No.
Are these usually seminars held by the state of Ohio, and are they usually require attendance in Columbus, or do they have them regionally? Do we know, or is that to be determined?
They have them, they have them regionally. They do have to be officially approved by the, I think it's the Attorney General's Office or Auditor of State. I forget which public office has to be an officially approved training. Knowing that this is something statewide, they do offer a lot of options geographically around. And you do, also do have the option, if you can get thirty-five attendees, you can invite the state down and they will do a, a session in your place. They just require that you have at least thirty-five people. So it is possible that if, something could be arranged with the local jurisdiction to meet that magic thirty-five if we wanted something here. I, I would say that if council would choose to continue the tradition to have a designee for their training, that would not mean that you could not attend additional training or training on your own. It just, it means that one box that's required by your position would be checked. So there's plenty of training opportunities, plenty.
I didn't get the opportunity to open my email that Mrs. Horover sent out to us today, but that is a, probably what you and I saw at the Warren County Municipal League meeting.
Yes, that was the presentation.
Presentation, and it was a very interesting meeting, so get an opportunity to take a look at that.
So right now would be a great time to nominate Brad or William to be the designee.
I will say the rules do state, though, that if council does choose to have a designee, it would need to be one person for the entire group. So some of you, it would not, you do not have an option to opt out. It's either everybody has the same designee, or you are all your own individual beings.
Between now and next, uh, next meeting, could you get a tentative schedule of the different times that they have training available?
Okay. Any other discussion? That will be on for a second reading on March 27. Ordinance 418, accepting the final plat of Timber Ridge Section 9 and dedicating of easements, on for the first reading.
An ordinance accepting the final plat of Timber Ridge Section 9 and confirming the dedication of easements. And before you tonight is, not to be redundant, an ordinance accepting Timber Ridge 9. This is the next section over in Timber Ridge. If you are traveling from Dairy Queen towards the Franklin Township Administration Building, I have to do geographical references for myself. So north on it, this would be, and, and Mr. Morris, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be the last section on the left, so between the new part of Auburn Meadows Court that is looping around and Fairview. Am I correct?
Yeah, on the west side, yeah.
Okay, yes, on the west side, thank you. It did go to Planning Commission for consideration on March 1st, and the Planning Commission did review. Our engineer has reviewed the plans as well and has made some comments about that. So Planning Commission reviewed the submitted plans and approved the plans with the engineer's comments, and the comments were just some follow-up little ticky-tack stuff about fire hydrants and make sure they cement certain lighting plants and stuff, which is normal. So the Planning Commission has indicated that they would like for council to accept this with the comments officially for the record.
Okay.
And Mr. Morris is here tonight if you do have questions specific about the plat, not to throw you under the bus.
Any other discussion? That will be on for a second reading on March 27. Moving on to second and third readings of ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 318, street lighting assessments, that is on for a second reading.
A resolution declaring it necessary to provide for lighting the streets, lanes, and other public ways in the municipality of Carlisle, Ohio with electric lighting during the year 2017, and authorizing the assessments for the cost and expense thereof upon all lots and lands lying and being within the corporate limits of said municipality.
That will be on for a third and final reading of March 27. Resolution 218, approving a variance to Section 1230.05 for Sunset Estates Development, that is on for a third and final reading.
A resolution approving a variance to Section 1230.05, curbs and gutters of the zoning code for the Sunset Estate Development.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a, bring up two points. One, when this was originally brought to our council, it was brought as an emergency. I would like at this time to explain the reason I voted no at that time. The, asking for the emergency didn't follow under the guidelines of what emergency would be legally allowed to be held for. So for that example, my vote was no, because there wasn't a reason within the confines of why you can have an emergency, so that would be number one. Number two, my vote for tonight would be based on my thoughts of respecting the, the commission, how I believe our downtown, I believe that 123 Central Avenue, Sunset, and Park Drive, as far back as ten, eleven years ago, I, I laid out a map of where all of our waterways were, where all of our sidewalks were, and where our sidewalks, I believe, should be. And, and for that, those, that is the reason that will support my vote this evening. So that would be it, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
One of my concerns I have is the precedence that would be set with the development on the other side of the road if, who knows, in the future, the...
That side already has curb.
The west side.
It already has curb, gutter, and sidewalk on that side, so. And there has already been precedent set on the acreage on Union Road. You guys have already approved that without curb and gutter and sidewalk, so you guys have already done that. So that's, that's what I'm telling you. You've already approved that. I have a similar situation, so now you're in a position where you've already approved that.
If I could just say, Union Road and Sunset are two totally different areas. We've got a densely populated area, soon will be more densely populated versus out on Union Road and out on Jamaica. So there's the difference.
It makes no difference. Six hundred and fifty-five. In respect to that, Mr. Morris, I would like to say, that is something that may be a past precedent, but it wasn't while I was a council member. That doesn't matter. That, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter who voted for it, it's, it's what the record states, and it doesn't matter. We've been developing and building homes in this town for twenty-five years, and if you guys can also support the development and the builder in this town, we'll go away. I mean, it's that simple. We, you know, we've been, we've built five hundred beautiful homes in this town, we want to build five more, and if you guys don't want a little house to do that, then you're saying those grow. In a small town, you can't do that.
I have no problem with the houses you build, I own one of them.
Yeah.
You guys build a fantastic home. I do have a concern with the amount of kids that I see walking over and going down that way, and it's just going to continue to have more and more kids. So my concern is that there is a sidewalk coming around the end of 123. They could walk down the end of that, go across, and then there's, you and I have put the sidewalks in on the west side, on the south side of the track, so there would be sidewalk for the majority of that. I have concerns, just being honest with you.
I'll be very honest, I've, I've read through our policy with the curb, gutter, Why that got on Union Road, I don't know. I mean, there's just a very short section of Union Road, it's, rest of it's all Miami Township, maybe that's why. I, I can't answer that question, but with the work that we've done on 123, and with Sunset and all that there, it, I just kind of feel like that there's going to be a need. You have built five hundred homes, and I hope you do build five hundred more if that's your goal, but with those homes that you're building brings a lot of foot traffic, a lot of kids, and we have to have a safe path for those kids that want to walk to school to be able to get there. And I just don't think walking in the road like we've done in years past is, is a safe way to travel. And I know that when the corner lot up here at Sunset is going to be developed, the, on the very corner of Sunset and 123, I know that's going to have curbing and sidewalks in that area, and it, and it will conform eventually, but that, those are the concerns that I have.
As far as the not made, not having existing, you go to Waterbury, it's a subdivision that goes and it dies out into an old subdivision, there's no curbs and sidewalks. You go to up here in Indian Trace, there's a curb and a sidewalk there, and it connects to nothing. So that, like Mayor Winkler said, what happened on Union Road was well before my time, I don't have control over that.
It's just not treating people the same is what is, you know, and I, I realize you guys weren't here and weren't involved in that, that you're treating me completely different from how people treat you, you know, because, you know, you went through that process, you know, you're saying this, this guy can do acreage lots, which are out parcel lots, that I can't, you know? And so that, that's the issue that we're going to have, so.
I, I understand, and I've been torn for three weeks over this issue, and the, the homes on the other side, if that western side of Sunset ever gets developed...
And you've got precedent set there, that you've got curbing gutter, and you've got sidewalk all the way running on that side. Whoever develops that side has to understand that. There's nothing on the east side. So I'm just telling you. Not that it's necessary to say, but I, I will say this personally, and that is the fact that I do appreciate the Morris family and Associate Construction. By no means is, is my vote personal, it's what I have in front of me. Yes, but this is a small town, we're the only builder in this town, we're the only developer in this town, and we have opportunities in Springboro, we have three different opportunities in Springboro that we can go. We don't have to build in Carlisle, you know, we're wrapping up Timber Ridge, we're wrapping up Eagle Ridge. What's our motivation if you're not going to support the only builder in the town? Over sidewalks and curb and gutter that are not there and are never going to be there, they're never going, who else is going to go in there? Who else? It's been for sale for twelve years, who else is going to go in there? Nobody, us. We do everything in this town, and you guys won't support us.
We, we've supported you.
Supported you in every aspect.
It, it's, and it's not, like Mr. Humphrey says, this is not a personal issue.
I'm, I'm not taking it personal.
Well, I, I appreciate that.
What I'm telling you is, in a small town, you can't, you've got to support builders and developers, especially when, when we're the only one, so, but. You make your decision, that's fine, you know, it's just, it's not fair.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion to adopt? So we have no motion? Do we have to vote one way or the other?
There's not a motion, there's nothing to vote on, is there?
I guess not.
I'm not sure what the proper protocol is in my tenure at Warren County Planning Commission. They ask for a motion, and it would be up to the individual to make a motion whether to approve or deny.
To approve or not approve.
And then we normally vote on that.
So do we have a motion to?
But that's a Planning Commission stage, correct?
Yep.
The county.
I could take another recess and ask our law director if you want clarification, if you feel that does...
if you feel that does this, does a motion need to happen?
If we need to have something, I guess we'll have to get hold of.
Mr. Trickery.
The way I understand it, if there's no motion there, there's nothing to vote on. But I am by far not up to speak on this.
We've had three, we've had three readings, so we, I think we probably should, you know, I think we need to vote yes or no on the approval or not approval. You want to get clarification?
Can we ask?
Yeah, would you like for me to get clarification?
Yes, I would.
Not to confuse anybody purposefully.
I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess for legal clarification.
Okay.
Okay. We have a second on that?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
I abstain.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
So we're in five-minute recess. We're now back in regular session?
Do they have to make a motion to go back to regular session, or do you just announce it?
I think we just announce it.
I did speak with our law director, and he has indicated that it is council's choice on how they want to handle. Either are acceptable. If there was a motion, as the mayor stated, to adopt, and there is no motion made, a request for someone to make a motion to adopt and no motion's made, in his opinion, that means that the issue has been denied. Or someone could make a motion to adopt and say yes, and then it could go to a vote for people to vote yes or no on, and it would be approved or denied that way. Or someone could make a motion to deny, and then a yes vote would mean, yes, it is denied, and a no vote would mean, no, it is not denied. So it depends, so as it stands now, in his legal opinion, the motion, the request was made, do I have a motion to adopt? And if there is not a motion, then in his opinion, it would be denied.
Okay. So we have no motion, so.
So knowing that, do you want to just ask for a motion again, just to make sure that?
Do we have a motion to adopt? So seeing that we have no motion, Resolution 218 would be considered denied. Under Ordinance 218, $1 million bond anticipation note for Union Road, 2018 renewal on for a third and final reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of $1 million renewal bond anticipation notes for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of making road improvements in the municipality.
Before you tonight is the third reading for a bond renewal. This bond is related to the extension of Union Road and the improvements to the Fairview Drive intersection. It is paid for out of the Timber Ridge TIF funds. This does represent a debt buydown of $325,000. By making this debt payment, we continue to be ahead of the minimum debt standard, debt schedule, excuse me, for this debt.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Ms. Tankersley?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
Ordinance 218 has been adopted. Ordinance 318, $745,000 bond anticipation note for State Route 123, Phases 4 through 7, 2018 renewal on for a third and final reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of $745,000 of bond anticipation notes by the municipality of Carlisle, Ohio, to provide funds to renew bond anticipation notes originally issued for the purpose of making road improvements in the municipality.
This is the bond anticipation renewal for the debt that the city issued for the improvements to State Route 123, specifically Phases 4 through 7. That's roughly, I believe, the light here at Sunset, Phase 10, or light at Sunset down to, light at Jamaica down to Sunset, the widening curb sidewalks, center turn lane. This does represent a $95,000 payment. This debt is paid out of the Eagle Ridge TIF fund, and with this $95,000 payment, we will remain on target for paying off that debt in our minimum standard time.
Any discussion? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
Ordinance 318 has been adopted. That's all we have on our agenda this evening. We have a motion to, for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Mayor Winkler?
Yes.
We are adjourned.